Madam Clerk, you want to do the roll?
Supervisor Brettafield.
Here.
Supervisor Chavez.
Here.
Supervisor Magsig.
Here.
Supervisor Pacheco.
Here.
Chairman Mendez.
I am here.
All present, thank you.
Okay, welcome to the June 10th meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We will begin with the invocation and flag salute. The invocation will be led by District III. After the invocation, remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to call up Pastor Michael Loretta. He is a pastor in Southeast Fresno, has done a lot of great work in our community, and he's really that next generation of our faith leaders in our community. Pastor?
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this morning, we thank you for a beautiful day and giving us all life this morning. I want to lift up all the supervisors here this morning as they delegate and as they go through business today. Bless them, Father God, give them wisdom, give them patience, and give them peace as they deliberate and as they talk to the people. Here, everyone under the sound of my voice right now, Father, I ask that you bless them, bless their families, bless their finances, and bless their business. Whatever it is that they're here for, may you bless it and just be all over it. Talk to the hearts and to the minds of everyone here, Father, and let us all have a beautiful, blessed day. Amen.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which I stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, agendas are in the back for anyone wanting to follow along. Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the audience, I just want to give advance notice to all that the Board of Supervisors meeting on June 24th will begin at 9:00 a.m. rather than 9:30 a.m. And that's two weeks from today. A notice has gone out to board staff and CAO's office to distribute to all departments. We now move to item number one, approve agenda.
Second.
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 Okay, all in favor who want to say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none? Madam Clerk, do you want to explain item nine?
Yes, for item number one, we will be moving item nine to follow item five. So if the motion and the second are agreement to that move, thank you. We now move to item number two, approve consent agenda, items eighteen through seventy.
Okay, does anyone on the board need to take anything off consent?
Chairman, there's two items. I need to remove item thirty-three and item sixty, I need to abstain on both for the Levine Act.
Mr. Chairman, I also have the same reason for item number sixty.
And, Mr. Chairman, I also need to recuse myself from item twenty-four and sixty for similar reasons.
That's perfect, that's three of us. Go to work, Dan.
You're on, Dan.
So that would be thirty-three, twenty-four, and sixty?
Correct.
Thank you.
And three on sixty.
Those three members that have to recuse themselves from sixty should draw lots to see which member, under the rule of necessity, would sit with the board for that item. Here's what I would suggest. Since there's three of us, Dan, why don't you tear up three pieces of paper, mark one of them, and put them in a cup, and we'll each draw something. But what we can do is, we can keep moving on with the agenda, and then you'll do that, you just come by and we'll each draw a piece of paper. If it's sixty, the other two people leave. Thank you.
Okay, well, we have to...
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, okay. We'll do that before nine.
Item sixty-two will be deleted from your consent.
What's that?
Item sixty-two will be deleted from your consent. Item sixty-two is deleted from consent.
Okay.
And then we have a correction to item twenty-five. CAO analyst discovered a discrepancy with item sixty-five, or twenty-five, and the purchasing agreement number in the paragraph below the recommended action has been corrected to read purchasing twenty-three dash six eight six to twenty-three six nine six. It's just a minor correction, but we're distributing the revised agenda.
Madam Clerk, and what were the three items pulled from consent again? The numbers, please.
Twenty-four, thirty-three, sixty.
Twenty-four, thirty-three, and sixty.
Oh, and there's one other item that I wanted to pull was twenty-five for discussion.
Twenty-five.
Okay. So is there anyone in the public that wants to pull any consent items? I'll move it back to the board for the remainder of the consent agenda. You got a second? All in favor who want to say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
We now move to item number three, under the Board of Supervisors, presentation of retirement plaque to Mark Castellano, Sheriff's Department, twenty-four years of service.
Good morning, Chairman, Board, CAO. Thank you for having us here today. On behalf of the Fresno County Sheriff's Office, it is my privilege to formally recognize and acknowledge Officer Margaret Castellano for her exceptional service and dedication to the county of Fresno. Officer Castellano began her career with the Fresno County Sheriff's Office on November thirteenth, two thousand, and served honorably for over twenty-four years in the Detention Bureau. Her assignments included the main jail, North Jail, South Jail, Central Control Team, and most recently, our new West Annex Jail. In each of these roles, she brought integrity, discipline, and a steadfast commitment to duty. Margaret was widely known for her unwavering focus on officer safety and facility security, core values she upheld throughout her career. Her leadership, operational knowledge, and professionalism made her a trusted and respected member of every team she served on. She also played a critical role in mentoring new officers, helping shape the future of the department through her guidance and example. Officer Castellano concluded her distinguished career on March third, two thousand and twenty-five, leaving behind a legacy defined by service, leadership, and loyalty to the Sheriff's Office and residents of Fresno County. I would like to thank the board for recognizing Margaret for her service and the county of Fresno, and on behalf of Sheriff Zanoni and his executive staff, I would like to thank Margaret for her service and a job well done.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. This is a privilege to receive my retirement plaque in front of the Board of Supervisors. I think it's an amazing deal that you guys do this for the officers. It's really appreciated, and I do miss my job. So I just want to thank you, everybody, for doing this for me. Thank you.
Any comments from the board?
For your service?
Yeah. Thank you very much. And with that, you want to have your family come up with you?
Sure.
Good day, all.
Good morning, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi.
We now move to item number four, under the Board of Supervisors, presentation of retirement plaque to Christina Young, Department of Behavioral Health, twenty-six years of service.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors. It's an honor to be here before you this morning. I have the privilege of speaking on behalf of employees of the Department of Behavioral Health often, but today presents a unique opportunity. Christina Young, whom we know as Tina, was the Executive Assistant in the Department of Behavioral Health. That position is very unique, working literally side by side. Like this. Attached at the hip with the Director of Behavioral Health. I'll share briefly a little bit about Tina's career history with the county, and then a few of my comments, again, because of the unique relationship an executive assistant holds with the director. Join me in the time machine, back to nineteen ninety-nine. In January, January twenty-fifth, Tina started her career with the county of Fresno in the Department of Probation. She was an office assistant, and her strengths were rapidly recognized by her colleagues. She became an Office Assistant Confidential, working in human resources, and then a Program Tech Confidential. Again, because of her many strengths and attributes, including leadership and her passion for public service, she was advanced through a special salary upgrade to be an Administrative Secretary and Administrative Services Assistant in two thousand and eight. In two thousand and ten, she officially became the Administrative Services Assistant in probation, and in two thousand and fifteen, she was promoted to the Executive Assistant in probation. DBH, from afar, recognized her attributes, and the former Director of Behavioral Health, Dewan Utech, was fortunate enough to bring Tina into our department as a transfer in two thousand and sixteen. I became the Director about three years ago and was really fortunate to work alongside Tina. It is a fast-paced job. She's had how many Directors? Four or five, each with unique personalities. Having to work side by side with a department head is no easy task. Things move rapidly. Department Heads like myself do not keep traditional business hours. I can't tell you how many times I sent Tina a frantic text saying, "I left my office without my packet, you know, I need this, that, and the other thing," and she gently would reply, "No problem." Even I forgot it was her day off. So her level of responsiveness, her passion for public service, her willingness to literally do whatever it takes, I cannot speak highly enough. I told Tina I could talk all day long about how much we adore her and miss her. She's well-regarded in the department, she has mentored countless others, and was a tremendous leader in our department. We miss her dearly. I'll pass it over to Tina, if the board would like to hear from her.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Board, for allowing me this opportunity to speak and recognize some very important people in my life that supported me through my twenty-six years with the county. First, I'd like to thank the Probation Department for my first work home with the county, started there, and so I'd like to give them a big thank you for allowing me all those opportunities to grow and learn. During the seventeen years that I spent there, I had the privilege to work with some great supervisors and department heads. Mickey McGuire, Vicky Noel, and then working also alongside now Chief Probation Officer Kurt Haynes, working directly under Chief Linda Penner and Rick Chavez, who I still consider a dear friend today. From DBH, I'd like to thank former Director Dewan Utech for bringing me into DBH when I needed or was looking for a new work home. Something changed, and I learned so much about the world of behavioral health, this time from the services side, which has been a blessing in my personal life. Thank you to Deputy Directors Mary Ann Lee, Lesby Castro Flores, and Emma Rasmussen for being such great mentors and leaders of the department. And thank you to Alicia Corona, the new Executive Assistant, Pavu, Jeanette Dominguez, in their support as administrative assistants, as well as Crystal Youngblood from the Probation Department. Lastly, a big thank you to Director Susan Holt. She isn't only a great leader, she's also a great advocate for the people of Fresno, and she's also a special person, one who's innovative, strong, and truthful. I have to thank Susan with my whole heart for supporting me in the last four years. I know she's only been Director for three, but she's been there throughout a challenging time that our family has gone through. And what I mean by that is, four years ago, our family was blessed and grew by four. We took in our nieces and nephews. At the time, they were nine, eleven, thirteen, and sixteen. Now, four years later, they're thirteen, fifteen, seventeen, and one turned twenty today. They couldn't be here today because they had other obligations, school, work, and sleep. Additionally, I'd like to recognize my family members that have supported me and encouraged me through my time with the county, my parents, my mom Gloria, who is here today, my dad Joe, my in-laws Lucy and Dan Ortiz, Beth Young, and my late father-in-law, Marie Young, who is a special place in my heart. My older sister Frances, who is here, who I've admired since childhood and whose drive is like no other, I'd like to just say she's, like, I just have such big admiration for her to this day. I'd also like to thank my children and bonus children. My bonus babies couldn't be here today, like I said. Their names are Zenaya, Michaela, Gabriel, and David. My daughter Jasmine. My daughter Jasmine Young and my son Jonah Young are here today. And I'd like to thank all of my kids and my family for sharing me with the county and understanding that sometimes the workday doesn't end at 5:00, and work was the priority as it supported our livelihood. The biggest thank you is to my high school sweetheart and husband of 24 years. Without him, I couldn't have retired at this time in my life. This was not the plan, however. When we got those kids, we said, "If we keep them for the long run, this will be the new plan." Luckily, he took a job many years ago that afforded us to pay less in health insurance than I was paying with the county, sadly. So with that, I was able to invest more in myself, put it towards retirement, and luckily, we were able to do that. I count us very fortunate, and I am humbled for how many families that can't afford these types of benefits. We are lucky and privileged. So lastly, now that I'm, although I'm retired from the county, I play to stay active in the community through volunteer work, advocacy, and community events that my daughter signs me up for. Do not be surprised if one day you see me back out in the workforce, because retirement just doesn't work for me. While I'm retired right now, I consider it an intermission before Act Two. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the, wants to make a comment? I just want to make one big one before Kurt comes up. You know, it sounds like the department's going to miss their mom.
That is true.
So with that, Kurt, do you?
Good morning. Kurt Keynes, your Chief Probation Officer for Fresno County. I just wanted to just get up and just say just a little bit about Tina and the relationship that she has continued to cultivate even as she left to go to the Department of Behavioral Health. Tina, she, like she said before, has been not just a great assistant to either the, to the Chief or to some of our Directors, but she has been a mentor, a friend, a real colleague who, during a time when it was a tough time, she was someone that we could lean on and someone who really did the work with integrity. And so I really just wanted to just say that on behalf of the Probation Department, how much we love you. Even though she's a Chicago Bear fan, we will still not necessarily hold that against her. But we absolutely am happy and just congratulating on your retirement. Good job.
With that, why don't you have your family come up with you?
We now move to item number five. Under Supervisor Magsick, proclaim June 2025 as Family Reunification Month in the county of Fresno.
All right, and we have lots to celebrate today. Great employees who've worked with the county, and family reunification is significant here in Fresno County. I know through Sonya's direction, we've seen a drop in foster kids within our care and a huge increase in young people who are being reunited with their families. And so that's what we're here to celebrate today. And I just want to share a statistic before I turn it over to Sonya and Dalvin, and for both of them to introduce their department. But I believe in 2024, California's reunification rate was 46%. That was the average statewide, 46%. But here in Fresno County, our reunification rate was 62%, which shows that here in Fresno County, we, our Department of Social Services is doing a fantastic job. So with that, Sonya, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Chairman, Members of the Board. Sonya Bougaye, Director of Social Services. And with me is Dalvin Baker and Kim Smith, our Deputies over Child Welfare, and Maria Vallejo, one of our Division Chiefs in Child Welfare, who along with her two peers is actually responsible for about 1,200 of our kids that are in family reunification, permanency planning, and family maintenance. And while we're not competitive, we're rather proud that we exceed the statewide average for family reunification by quite a bit for the last year. So I want to share that I really appreciate this opportunity to present Family Unification and Proclaim June as a Family Unification Month. While we are charged overall with keeping kids safe, the work of our staff isn't only on investigation and safety. It really is about, bulk of our work, is about helping families keep kids safe jointly. So that work of our family reunification staff to keep families together is really important. Last year, from May to May, we had 371 kids reunify in our county. And that is 371 families, 371 stories, services and work not just on, from our department's perspective, but work from our parents and kids and families and our, and our resource families, and helping kids and families be safe and thrive. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Dalvin and Maria to give you a little bit more about this proclamation.
Good morning, Chairman, Members of the Board. Dalvin Baker, Deputy Director, Child Welfare. Family reunification is at the heart of everything we strive for in child welfare. When a child is removed from their home, our immediate and ongoing goal is always to safely return them to the care of their family whenever possible. Reunification is not a finish line. It's a process that reflects healing, growth, and restoration. It represents a parent's commitment to change, a child's hope for stability, and a community's investment in preserving families. It requires support, accountability, and trust, all working together to help families overcome challenges and return to one another stronger than before. Our department is proud to support families through this journey. We know it takes a village: social workers, parent partners, counselors, court professionals, and community agencies, all working alongside families to each step of the way. And when reunification happens, it marks more than a legal milestone. It is a moment of transformation and renewed possibility. I would like to now introduce Maria Vallejo, Division Chief with our department.
Good morning, Members of the Board. Good morning, Chairman. And a special thank you to Mr. Magsick for sponsoring today's proclamation. Thank you. With myself, I am Maria Vallejo, Division Chief for the Child Welfare Services. For the month of June, Family Unification, our theme is actually collaboration. And an example of this is our Linkages partnership. So Linkages is a program where you have an open child welfare case as well as an active CalWorks case. And through this, you're assigned a job specialist, a social worker, and an eligibility worker. And they provide support through employment services, through housing support, financial support, and really anything to assist in removing barriers that prompted our attention to the family. Now with that, we also are going to be honoring our recently reunified families on June 26th, and we cordially invite you to that, to that event. If you've never attended one, I really would hope that you would attend one at least during your tenure as Board Members. So thank you very much.
Any comment from the Board? You want to make a motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion.
Second? Is there any public comment? All in favor, so am I saying aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Please come up.
You can come up.
Mr. Chairman, I know we said we take up item nine after five, but we're going to take the consent first and then item nine.
Yeah.
So we'll start with item 24, which I believe was pulled by Supervisor Brettafield due to the Levine Act. So this is under the Sheriff, Coroner, Public Administrator.
Who won the lottery?
Well, that's right, item 60.
No, I just want to know who did. That way.
Who's going to be voted?
Yeah. Okay. All right. So let's do 24 then. Yeah. We'll do 24 right now. Yeah, just.
So item 24, under the Sheriff, Coroner, Administrator.
Don't go too far.
Approve and authorize Chairman to execute a Microsoft Enterprise Agreement with Dell Incorporated.
I don't know that we necessarily need a presentation for members. It's pretty cut and dry. It's why it's on consent. Maybe open it up to public and then we vote.
Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried.
That takes us to item 25, which I believe was pulled by Supervisor Brettafield for a discussion item under County Council. Approve and authorize Chairman to execute Amendment Number Two to Legal Services Agreement, Purchasing Agreement P-23-696.
Yes. The question I have here is, we have a contract, I guess, with McCormick Barstow. In less than two years, we've gone from having a contract with them for $50,000 to $500,000. A thousand percent increase. Why?
The, it's a litigation matter, and the litigation matter has heated up substantially. We expect to be going to trial on that in October. Up to that point, we were trying to minimize outside counsel expenses, so my office bore the expense of litigating that matter on our own. And so we had, we had to have the counsel associated, but we weren't spending a lot on the outside counsel.
They can't just bill us for their services as opposed to coming up with a half a million dollar contract?
I'm sorry, say again.
They can't just bill us for the time that they spend on their.
Have to have a contract, or the auditor controller won't pay for the bills that you get. The auditor controller has to have authorization from the Board, either through a purchasing agent contract or by a board-authorized contract to do that. And with the amount of work we have with McCormick, you know, we're way over the services amount for a purchasing contract.
How many cases have they handled for us in the two years?
McCormick does quite a few cases, because they have a lot of our risk cases also. This contract is for a non-risk piece of litigation. I don't know the number off the top of my head. We can pull that up pretty quickly between risk and us.
Okay. But we can't handle these cases. You feel that it's important to go out to McCormick?
For one reason, this is a case that I have a lot of expertise in, and I won't, you know, be here after June 30th. And so it was necessary to have outside counsel. We don't, my office is not set up to handle large-scale cases. We don't have the, you know, we have three paralegals for 30 attorneys. In a regular, you know, if you had a insurance defense firm of five attorneys, you'd have 10 staff people to leverage the hours of the litigation attorneys. And our attorneys get pulled in a lot of different directions in terms of the directions from the Board. You know, my litigators have to do code enforcement and other items. We don't have the capacity to handle, just from start to finish, more than one of these cases at a time. We've been doing a lot of this action for the last three years and kept the costs down. But if you're going to try something, it's going to cost you a couple hundred thousand dollars at least.
It just, it just seemed like going from $50,000 to half a million dollars in two years.
Yeah. That's a reflection of the fact that my office is saving this county money instead of paying outside councils to do that litigation.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any public comment on this item? Move it back to the Board.
Move for approval.
Second. All in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
We now move to item 33, under Behavioral Health. I believe this was pulled by Supervisor Magsick due to the Levine Act under Administrative Policy 34 for competitive bidding. Our request for proposals determine that an exception to the competitive bidding requirement under AP 34 is satisfied and suspension of competition is warranted.
Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors. Item 33 is an Innovations Phase II project. Innovations is a component of funding under the Mental Health Services Act implemented in 2004. Those funds will end under the BHSA, the Behavioral Health Services Act, beginning July 2026. We are required to expend those innovations funds through this encumbrance. The Mental Health Services Oversight and Accountability Commission must approve all innovations plans before any dollars can be expended, and the MHOAC has approved this Phase II plan. It is a suspension of competition because innovations funds are research funds, and Phase One was a program operated. It's a shelter-like care environment for individuals who have a serious mental illness who are at a pre-contemplative stage of change, meaning that they don't recognize that there's a problem. They're not interested in services and supports. We want to build on the successes of that model in Phase Two, testing with the substance use disorder population, which will prepare us for SB 43 implementation as well as changes under Prop One. More than happy to take any questions.
Questions from the Board?
I do. So this contract is for 6.6 million?
Yes.
And it's a low-barrier program?
Correct.
And how many, and it's a three-year contract?
Yes.
Okay. So how many people do you anticipate that will benefit from this program per year?
At any given time, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, there's 30 persons who could be served. What we're looking to do is to reach out to persons who are living in the streets, in encampments, and pull them into the shelter. I don't have that figure off the top of my head in terms of projections over the duration.
On a monthly basis, they can, what I was looking for is, how many can they house on a monthly basis?
At any given time, if I'm not mistaken, it's 30 capacity, and that could rotate. Persons are not required to stay there, and so due to the turnover, we could have a variation in the total per month. But I'd be happy to follow up with that data.
That's fine. And then how long do they get to stay there once they bring them in?
The model originally was, I believe, 30 days with the option to extend that. The goal of the program is to move them through those stages of change and readiness to accept services so that they can transition to other residential care environments or to housing and to treatment.
Good on you. Thank you.
And if I may, under the Behavioral Health Services Act, the department would be required to expend a certain amount of new categorical dollars. It's not new money. It's a re-categorization of existing money. And the target population that we're looking to serve through this research would align with the new BHSA requirements.
Any more questions from the Board? Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the Board. Got a motion to approve. Second. All in favor, so am I saying aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carried. So we'll go to 60.
Item 60, under Public Works and Planning. I believe this item was pulled due to the Levine Act.
And I'll just mention for the record, Madam Clerk, that pursuant to lots drawn, Supervisor Pacheco will be serving pursuant to the rule of necessity so that we can have three members of the Board present. And Supervisors Magsick and Brettafield are recusing themselves.
Good morning. Do you need a presentation on this item?
No.
No, I don't think so. You good? Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none? Notion?
All second.
Second? All in favor, so am I saying aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you. So we can ask everybody to come back.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes all consent items pulled from this morning. We will return to your regular agenda. As noted this morning, we will take up item number nine, under Public Works and Planning. Conduct public protest hearing, receive written protests from owners of property, including their tenants currently receiving water and sewer services in Fresno County Service Area Number Forty-seven.
Good morning, Board members, Chris Bump with the Department of Public Works and Planning. The item before you today is a protest hearing to increase water and sewer service fees for County Service Area Forty-seven, Quail Lakes. CSA forty-seven provides services to seven hundred and eight residential lots, as well as a school, a clubhouse, and one undeveloped commercial parcel. The proposed fee structure includes a base and a usage component for water, and then a fixed monthly charge for sewer. The new structure is intended to recover operation and maintenance costs, pay back unpaid charges, raise appropriate reserves, and fund critical system upgrades. At the conclusion of staff presentation, after addressing any questions your board may have, the public portion of the hearing should be opened by your board and testimony received from those here today wishing to address your board. At the conclusion of the public protest hearing, staff will tabulate the protest letters and report back to your board the results. And that concludes my presentation, I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, are there any questions from the board? Hearing none. I'll move to all the disclaimers now. Anytime prior to the close of the protest hearing, property owners wishing to submit a letter of protest or challenge or withdraw their earlier submitted letter of protest may take that request to the office of the clerk at the window outside the board. No letters of protest will be accepted, and no withdrawals will be allowed after the protest hearing has been closed. No staff expert for the clerk's deputies may accept a letter of protest. The public portion of this protest hearing is now open. Are there any questions or comments from the public? This is a public comment for this item. So I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion to accept and the public portion of this protest hearing is now closed. Tabulation of the letters of protest will now take place. Members of the public wishing to observe the tabulation process are welcome to accompany staff.
We have lots of them.
What's that?
We have lots of ballots. Okay, we will let them tabulate.
Yeah, they'll do that, we'll go on with the.
Yes, we'll move on to item number six, under the Administrative Office. Conduct first hearing, retile and amend chapter fifteen point six oh, State Responsibility Area Fire Safe Regulations of the County of the Ordinance Code of Fresno County.
Good morning, Board, Amina Flores Becker, Deputy CAO with the County Administrative Office. The item before you is a proposed ordinance update to adopt CAL FIRE's twenty twenty-five fire hazard severity zone map for Fresno County as required by government code. Our office collaborated with County Council and the Department of Public Works and Planning to draft the proposed ordinance. Under government code, the state fire marshal is mandated to identify the fire hazard severity zones across the state. Once CAL FIRE issues the fire hazard severity zone maps, government code requires counties to adopt ordinance reflecting the moderate, high, and very high fire hazard severity zones within the local responsibility area. The proposed ordinance amendment will retitle chapter fifteen point sixty to include reference to local responsibility areas, define key terms to ensure clarity, and adopt the Fresno County Fire Hazard Severity Zone Map as issued by CAL FIRE. To comply with government code, the updated map for Fresno County was published on the county's Office of Emergency Services website on April tenth, twenty twenty-five, with a section for submitting comments. On April eleventh, twenty twenty-five, the update was shared via county's social media channels. As of today, the county has received no public comments on the map. Lastly, public notices were posted at the offices of the recorder, assessor, and public works and planning as required by government code. That concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Since a lot of these, a lot of these areas affect residents who live in my district. So as I read this particular item, we can only add additional areas as hazardous zones, we can't take areas off, correct?
I believe the areas are dictated by CAL FIRE, so yeah, we can't make any changes.
And do we, do we have any knowledge or understanding of how these maps, if they're used at all by insurance companies? Because what I'm getting at is there are some new zones that are severe and moderate that were identified by CAL FIRE, which are affecting some residents. So is there an opportunity at all for us to either reach out to insurance companies or CAL FIRE to do what we can to try to keep insurance rates as low as possible for residents in eastern Fresno County?
So we have been in communication with CAL FIRE specific to this map. It is a public map, so if insurance companies wanted to reference it in their decision-making, they definitely could. We haven't received any comments to that effect, but, but we can, we can work with them and CAL FIRE to see if there's any, any mitigation possible.
And then on the area of mitigation, I know that there are firewise communities, I think Fresno County has about eleven of them right now. And these particular zones, I don't think they really take into consideration communities within the zones that have done work to kind of remove high-hazard fuels. So maybe a comment that I would just add right now, and maybe we can reach out to CAL FIRE about it, is to the extent that we have firewise communities in some of these moderate and high-hazard fire zone areas, that they can be given credit for that, and maybe almost create islands within some of these zones where fuels have been reduced and recorded with the state.
Absolutely, and we can work with your office to identify those communities.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll move for approval.
Second, all in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries, thank you.
We now move to item number seven, under Administrative Office and Behavior Health. Adopt resolution authorizing Fresno County's participation in the California Department of Housing and Community Development No Place Like Home Program.
Good morning, Board, Dylan McCully, Homelessness Program Manager with the County Administrative Office. The item before you today is a resolution authorizing the county to participate in the No Place Like Home Grant Program and directing staff to reallocate funding from the No Place Like Home Program to the Home Key Plus Sanger Modular Permanent Supportive Housing Project. In twenty twenty-two, the county submitted an application for eleven point nine million dollars in No Place Like Home funding and was tentatively awarded for the Libre Commons Project located at sixty-three West Shaw in the city of Fresno. In January twenty twenty-five, after determining that the project was no longer viable due to insufficient funding, the county withdrew support for the Libre Commons Project. On May fifteenth, the California Department of Housing and Community Development authorized the county to transition the tentative No Place Like Home Award from the Libre Commons Project to the county's proposed Sanger Modular Home Key Plus Project. With the incorporation of these No Place Like Home dollars, the total number of units at the Sanger Home Key Plus Project would be increased to eighty-eight units from the original fifty-one, with twenty-two units reserved for veterans. The total project development budget is approximately thirty-seven point nine million, with an average cost of four hundred and thirty-one thousand per unit. Upon adoption of the recommended resolution, staff will coordinate with HCD and the Sanger Modular Development Team to facilitate the transfer of the No Place Like Home funds to the Sanger Home Key Plus Project. This concludes my presentation, Director Holt and I are available for any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Maybe just a clarification, I know in your presentation, you indicated that the, the county withdrew its support from Libre Commons. But I think what happened is we approved extensions for that funding, and because, again, the, the state funding, but because additional financing couldn't be put in place for that project, we chose to not, to continue to extend the, the support of the application. So it wasn't that we withdrew, it's, it's just that it didn't appear that that project was viable. So I just wanted to kind of clear that up. Very supportive of this, I know the community of Sanger is excited, and where there are projects that we can get past the, the finish line, it looks like here in Sanger, this one's a much more viable project, so very excited about that.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, I have to agree with him, the city of Sanger is pretty excited about getting this funding, so which is good. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll move for approval.
Second, all in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries, thank you.
We now move to item number eight, and under Human Resources, conduct a public hearing on the status of county's vacancies, recruitment and retention efforts, and obstacles in the hiring process pursuant to California Government's Code, Section three five oh two point three, formerly known as Assembly Bill two five six one, and accept staff's report on the county's vacancies, recruitment and retention efforts, and obstacles in the hiring process in accordance with the same.
Good morning, Board, Hollis McGill, Director of Human Resources with the county of Fresno. And today I will be discussing Assembly Bill two five six one, which requires us to report on vacancies, recruitment and retention efforts, and any bargaining unit that has over a twenty percent vacancy rate. On the subject of vacancies, the county currently has eight thousand three hundred and eighty-seven allocated positions. And I'm pleased to report for twenty twenty-five, the vacancy rate has dropped to eleven percent, the lowest it's been in five years. So what has contributed to this improvement? Well, the salary increases that this board has provided to our staff and to our represented groups. We've also had equity and consolidation adjustments for several represented bargaining units, as well as the addition of the sixth step for many of the bargaining units. Now, as far as recruitment, our current performance of ninety days to hire is really in line with the industry standards. However, HR is finalizing some proposed improvements to make our recruitment efforts more efficient and exceed the standard, which will be brought back to your board at a later date. For recruitment and retention, to attract top talent, the team continues to highlight the benefits of the public sector employment, including zero health premium for employee and employee plus children tiers. There's also the employer deferred comp match up to thirteen hundred dollars per year. So this has been an amazing thing that this board has done for our employees, and has really made a difference in retaining staff. Now, while our overall vacancy rate is eleven percent, two bargaining units have vacancy rates that are exceeding the twenty percent. The first one is the Public Defender, which is right out about a twenty-eight vacancy rate. However, they just hired three people as of June ninth, as of yesterday, and two more are going to be pending job offers. So unfortunately, there is a statewide shortage of attorneys, but we are making progress with that particular unit. There have been several increases, including specialized and performance pay, that has helped attract staff to the Public Defenders. The next unit is Engineers Unit Forty-two. This is a smaller bargaining unit, so this equates to about ten engineering vacancies. In talking with the department, they'd like to focus more on applicants who have a civil engineering background. So we are working with them to attract those with basically the experience that they are looking for. But that is something that we have been working with. So thank you for your time, overall, we are trending in the right direction. So we're working collaboratively with our departments and with the ones that do have the vacancy rate over twenty percent. And as we continue to refine and our recruitment efforts, we remain committed to ensuring the county of Fresno attracts and retains the best talent. I'm here for any questions.
Any questions from the board? I'll move, since there's none, I'll move to public comment on this matter. Hearing none, I'll move it back to the board. Thank you, got it. Motion by Chavez, second by Magzic. All in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries, thank you. Move to item ten.
Item ten, under Social Services. Receive and discuss the Fresno County MODC Quarterly Governing Board Body Report and Updates for the period of December fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, to March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, Sonya Bougay. This is our second quarterly report to your governing board for our MODC Shelter. The, the report is attached in the agenda items, so I will just highlight a couple of brief points, and we're available for questions. And I should have said that with me is Kim Smith, our Deputy over Child Welfare, and Jessica Correa, who is one of our division chiefs, and also one of our shelter managers. All right, so for our second quarter, there are a couple of things that we really would like to point out to you. Two that we, one is that we have two new policies and procedures, one for our intake process and update on our reporting requirements. And those were attached. We have had twenty-five, I'm sorry, twenty-two law enforcement contacts during this three-month period, and twenty of them are really related to reporting for unauthorized leaves, for kids leaving the facility, twenty AWOLs, and two are really related to hospitalization of two kids. And during this period of time, we had a total of thirty-four entries, which represents twenty-six kids. And usually for our MODC, the reason we have entries into our shelter is related to our inability to find placement for them within twenty-four hours. So these are youth that are twelve years or older that end up staying with our shelter until we find appropriate placement. And during this period of time, we had no overstays, so we're licensed for up to nine days, and we did not have any youth stay longer than nine days. So that concludes my report, but we're available for any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Any public comment on this item? There's no need for a motion?
I believe that's correct, it's just a receive item.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to item number eleven, Board of Supervisors Committee Reports and Comments.
There's still any word from?
They have not finished tabulating.
Righty. Yeah, go ahead, Gary.
Okay. I wanted to first talk about, my staff and I went to the Juvenile Justice Center for a tour, and just want to recognize the great work that they're doing at the, at the Justice Center. Particularly want to recognize Chief Probation Officer Kirk Haynes, who's here. David Ruiz, Deputy Chief Probation Officer, and Regina Polaris, Supervising Juvenile Correctional Officer. I think you can be very proud of what's going on there. Tremendous opportunities for young folks who made horrible mistakes to turn their lives around. Whether they do or they don't, time will tell, but they have plenty of opportunities, the staff is tremendous. The programming is done very well, and so I just want to recognize that. A lot of criticism always, it's easy to criticize, but you know, went out there and they're doing great work. So congratulations to, to the chief, and to you, Mr. CAO, and to all the folks that are doing the great work out there. Two things, this week, this weekend, we had the Gay Pride Parade. And I became aware that some of our departments at the county spent some significant dollars at the parade, tax money, to participate, to walk in the parade, I guess to hand out some things. The county has already passed an ordinance stating that only the American flag should fly outside the government building here at the county. That decision was made to avoid the perception of promoting any divisive symbols, such as flying the pride flag at public institutions. Yet despite that, Fresno County departments, including Public Health, Social Services, and Behavior Health, participated in the pride parade using taxpayer money. With Public Health alone spending five thousand dollars, five thousand, they also distributed items like condoms and lubricant. That is not just public outreach, it crosses into advocacy, and you can see some of the things they were handing out, condoms with rainbow colors and county name on there. This is not something the county should be engaging in, it's inappropriate use of public funds, and not representative of the entire community. Even more concerning is that departments are making these expensive. Even more concerning is that departments are making these expenditures without board oversight. As it stands, individual board members must bring forward any spending over $1,000 for approval. Yet departments are spending thousands without any transparency or accountability. That's completely unacceptable to me. And so I will be directing our CAO to return with an administrative order requiring that any county department seeking to spend any amount of money on a community event in the future must receive board approval prior to any expenditure. Representing the county requires approval from the full board, not individual discretion. If someone wants to participate in events like Pride on their own time, that's their right, certainly support anybody making their own personal decisions, but not under the county name or with taxpayer dollars. That's an inappropriate use, and I don't expect that to ever happen again. And when we bring this EAO, I hope the board will support it in its entirety, just like when we have to expend money here. Everything falls back on us, and so we have to assume that responsibility. So in two weeks, is that reasonable for you to bring that back?
Good morning.
Just so you know, next meeting has 80 items. I just want to let everybody know, full disclosure.
I might suggest we're, the agenda for the 24th is almost completed, so perhaps July 8th might give a little more time.
Okay, that's fine. Certainly have no problem. Okay. And the last thing, yesterday, we had an ICE protest outside the Feral Court. It was a peaceful protest here in Fresno, and I observed it along with Supervisor Magzik. While I strongly disagree with many of the views expressed by the demonstrators, I fully support their constitutional right under the First Amendment to assemble and speak freely. I want to commend those who participated for conducting themselves in a respectful and orderly manner. They showed that dissent can be voiced without violence or destruction, an important lesson that all groups should remember, and in Fresno, that's been the trend. We do things peacefully here. Unfortunately, what we witnessed in Los Angeles was quite the opposite. Rioting and looting there was disgraceful and a stain on Governor Newsom and Mayor Bass. Such lawlessness has no place in a civilized society. Fresno County is not a sanctuary county. We respect the rule of law and prioritize the safety and well-being of our citizens. That means recognizing the difference between peaceful protests and criminal behavior. We also stand firmly in support of legal immigration while opposing illegal immigration, which undermines public safety in our communities. President Joe Biden's disastrous policies have allowed nearly 20 million illegal immigrants, many of them criminals, from third world countries to enter this country unchecked. This has placed an enormous burden on ICE, who are now working tirelessly to apprehend and remove these, those engaged in criminal activity to protect our citizens. Meanwhile, Governor Newsom and Mayor Bass have supported this lawlessness and have failed to protect their communities from the chaos of rioting and looting. I support personally President Trump's decisive call to deploy the National Guard to restore peace in Los Angeles. I'm confident that his leadership will bring law and order back to the city and that justice will prevail. And finally, I want to thank our local law enforcement, the Fresno County Sheriff's Department, our Fresno Police Department, federal officers for their professionalism and restraint. Their dedication to public safety and respect for the constitutional rights reflects the values we uphold in Fresno County: law, order, and our respect for our Constitution. So thank you to all the law enforcement. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I want to bring it to my colleagues' attention. On June 26, for the regularly scheduled Council of Governments meeting, I have a scheduling conflict and will not be able to attend that meeting. My alternate Supervisor Magzik, I believe, also has a scheduling conflict and would like to open it up to my other three colleagues. If you are available, you are more than welcome to attend the COG meeting to represent the county board, because they are having a lot of discussion on Measure C. So Supervisor Magzik and I wanted to bring that to your attention, so if you want representation there, you will have that opportunity. We just need to let that agency know you will be attending in one of our two places. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
What is that date?
It's Thursday, June 26, the last Thursday of this month, at 5:30 across the street.
You think you can make it, Gary?
I'll try. I got to check.
Yeah, we'll check, because I'd really like you to go.
Yeah, June 26, 5:30. Okay, we'll look into that for sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Luis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am interested in what Supervisor Brettafield mentioned with regards. I did attend the Pride Parade. I support that. We disagree on that. I would like to see what we've used in the past as a criteria for what events supervisors and county resources are expended. I think there were some, based on what I'm seeing from this. I didn't see this at the parade. There are some things in here that are health-focused. You know, Supervisor Brettafield, I'd like to know a little bit more about that. But I also want to share some thoughts and want to thank the peaceful protests that we saw from our folks yesterday. I know my colleagues went out there and saw what, you know, the First Amendment looks like. I thought they were very effective. I thought they were very good in getting the word out without burning vehicles, without destroying property. And as you see, you saw from the coverage of the media, that was very well-covered with regards to our local folks here. I think what we're seeing in L.A. is showing that we have extreme crazies on both sides, and I hope that we share the same outreach and concern when people deface and vandalize federal property and assault our officers. January 6, we saw a bunch of raging lunatics that actually destroyed federal property and actually hurt and killed our law enforcement officers, so I hope we share that consensus as well, and not just be selective as to who we condemn. I think for us here locally, we've always done things the right way, and I want to urge our protesters that have two protests planned this weekend, on Saturday. One is at Cary Park, and the other one is on Blacks on the Nease to continue that way of exercising the First Amendment right. We'll be there to support them, make sure that our law enforcement folks are protected, and there to keep them safe. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
So what I've heard so far is with Gary's suggestion about an administrative order, you're interested, I'm interested too, so I think to bring something back, I think we've got a majority, I think all of us may be interested in that, just so there's clarity for our CAO on that. So a couple of things I want to talk about. I am on the Board of Directors of the National Association of Counties. We had a Western Interstate Region meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I attended that meeting, which was in South Dakota, and we had, we're preparing for our annual meeting, which will take place in July in Philadelphia. And as Board of Director, there's only 130 supervisors from across the nation that are on the Board of Directors out of the 3,069 counties, so very honored to represent California as its only urban county representative on that Board of Directors. So just wanted to report out that I was in South Dakota a few weeks for NACO. Also, I want to introduce Haley Yanez, who's here. She is a Matti Institute intern, and so she is with my office, and I believe in the near future, our CAO may also have some interns that show up here. But I love the work of Fresno State. I love the, what the work the Matti Institute does and how it was founded. And Senator Ken Matti was a diplomat, someone who could work both sides of the aisle, and so the Matti Institute came about in the early 2000s. And so Haley is a part of that program, and she'll be with us for about 150 hours, which basically is a few months. So very excited to have her help inform me on how I can do my job better and learn from her perspective. So welcome aboard. Something else I wanted to also bring up, along the lines of an administrative order, I recognize that throughout the year, there are a number of different events to be recognized. There are certain things, like this month is Men's Mental Health Awareness Month, and I don't know if any departments are going to be bringing things forward, but I think it would be good to, you know, to recognize that. But I'd love to have an administrative order, because again, as Gary indicated, anytime our departments get involved with anything, that reflects back on us, and we're elected by the people in our respective districts, and when our departments choose to, whether it be sponsor things or celebrate things, it's not their phones that are ringing, it's typically ours. So along those lines, too, an administrative order that would take a look at if there are, if there are events, dates, things that are going to be recognized and celebrated publicly, that those are things that need to be authorized by the Board of Supervisors first. So it's very much in line with what Gary has recommended, but again, goes a little bit further to take a look at, you know, holidays and things that are to be celebrated, just that needing to be approved by you and/or the Board of Supervisors. So we have a little bit more control. And I don't know if you guys are open to that as well, but wanted to.
We're still talking.
Yes, we are absolutely still talking.
So, can I clarify? So you're wanting to bring back to the board holidays, events, that the board officially will recognize?
Correct.
And if that holiday is not recognized by the board, then departments should not be promoting them?
Correct.
Okay. So, because one of the things that I'm thinking right now is the library. You know, we've had a lot of discussion, you've had, before I got here, discussion about gay pride being promoted in the library. I have a lot of problem with that being promoted in the library. I went into the library, I see gay pride, you know, cutouts everywhere, they got a certain bookcase practically at the front of the door, says pride with books. If this board does not sanction, just as, they didn't sanction the pride flag outside, flying outside this building, if that is not on the list, then it is my expectation, and I think we all should take a vote on whether we support that or not, then it's going to be my expectation that in the libraries from now on, in the future, there will not be gay pride all over the place, there will not be a bookcase as you walked in saying pride, just like Target last year and the year before did that, and now Target has said, no, we're not doing that anymore. That would be my expectation, is if we don't approve it as a board, and it's not on that list, then I'm calling out the library right now, and I will expect you to hold a librarian accountable if that is not on the list. If it is on the list, go for it. It's my hope that this board will not have that on the list, and that these libraries cannot be, you know, a place where we're promoting an agenda, because I think it is an agenda, and it's a political agenda, and it's not a good agenda that's being promoted. I think kids should just go to the library and not have that thrown in their face, certainly little children. So that's my hope, and I don't know if that's where you were going with it, but that's certainly what I would hope we do.
Okay, I'm going to talk now. You guys talk tonight.
You got it.
You know, on the money deal, I definitely agree with Gary. I mean, that's, you know, the county shouldn't be sponsoring stuff, anything, without permission of the board if money's involved. Now, that can get complicated and complicate you, you know, if we start making a list as what we celebrate or not, and this is something that we're going to have to work on. But what Gary's talking about, we can talk about in closed session, there's ways to fix that. Anyway, that's, you know, but we need to bring something back, and I mean, we might have to massage it a little bit, but definitely the money deal needs to be fixed. I do have one thing, kind of shared this with Paul, I'm kind of a, I have a lot of nerdy friends that, especially weather people, and there's a model out there starting, it's going to get hot here, you know, the next few days, it's going to cool off and get hot again, but starting on the 17th of June, there's a model that starts temperatures of 105, and it goes clear into Wednesday, the 25th, and there's temperatures of, anywheres of 111, 114, 115, like we had last year. So I'm just saying that, that we need to be prepared. Hopefully, that model won't prove true. One of our cameramen, he's got a guy that works at his station that he can talk to after this meeting, who's pretty plugged in, so I think that's something we need to be prepared for. I mean, this guy's been right more than he's been wrong, so that's, being a weatherman's the only thing you can be wrong and still have a job.
True.
So anyway, that's, well, some of them can be wrong all the time and still get elected. We have a whole bunch of them in Sacramento. Okay, do you have?
Well, Mr. Chairman, in light of the discussion, I would just add, I think Supervisor Magzik's topic is, while it's related, is different than what Supervisor Brettafield said. So I would highly recommend that we don't try and make a one-size-fit-all, that it should come back in two different items. You are going to need at least 30 days to do this. The money part is easy, because if we're held to that, I can understand that as well. But in terms of what we agree to and don't agree to for the entire county of Fresno, I have issue with that. I do. I do. And I don't think it should be in one item personally, and I think that's going to be a long, complex issue, and it's going to take some time to develop. But I just want to go on record, I think it's two separate items, and I have a problem with picking who wins and who loses in representing the entire county of Fresno.
Yeah, so what I heard was consensus on the dollar amounts for sponsorship to come back, and for the other, we can, I think that would be a separate discussion that will take a little more time, and we can come back with that.
With that, we ready to do?
We are ready for item number nine. Staff is here to report out.
Could I just get clarification, Mr. Chairman? So I agree with you, it should be absolutely two different things, but are, when you said more discussion, or are you request, having him bring something back, and then we will discuss and make decisions?
Yes, yes. The monetary would be more concrete, that would be, what you recommended should take 30 days to come back.
And then the other thing, though, isn't there a written administrative order that we're going to discuss?
So that should come back as a separate?
Yeah, we'll keep discussing that.
Okay, got it.
There's no doubt about that.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
Chris Bump, Department of Public Works, planning.
Report your results.
Staff has completed counting the protests. Out of 711 possible protests, we received 53, which is about 7%. There is not a majority protest, and staff recommends your board approve recommended action A.
Okay, is there any motion to?
So moved.
Okay. Second. All in favor, signal saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
We now move to item number 12, received board.
We had B. Is it, what's the B?
It was either A or B.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So we now move to item 12, Board Appointments.
Does anybody have any appointments? We're all appointed out, huh? Okay, I'll move to public presentation for anything not on the agenda. You've got three minutes.
My name is Camor Gill. I'm a physician currently employed by the Fresno County Jail, and today I hear, today I speak about unlawful medical control and violations of California law as it pertains to Medical Practice Act. Good evening, supervisors. This is a matter of public integrity, legal compliance, and patient safety, and not a personal complaint. Fresno County contract of the jail services is with California Forensic Medical Group, a California-registered medical corporation, but in practice, the company's making the decision isn't CFNG, it's WELPATH, a Tennessee-based for-profit corporation which is not licensed to practice medicine in California and is not party to the county contract. This violates California Corporate Practice of Medicine doctrine, one of the oldest and clearest restrictions on, under the Business and Professions Code, which prohibits corporations from influencing or controlling how medical care is provided. WELPATH is doing exactly what the law prohibits, hiring and firing of physicians and nurses directly, including Fresno jail medical staff, setting physician salaries, schedules, and clinic hours, deciding who gets outside referrals, what diagnostic tests should be approved, and which equipment should be purchased, which, according to the California law, has to be under physicians' control. Even non-physicians employed by WELPATH, like RN, are acting as health services administrators and are making clinical decisions. This is a textbook unlicensed practice of medicine. According to the California law, only the licensed physicians can make these decisions. And let's be clear, WELPATH does not operate independently of CFNG. They control CFNG. CFNG is now functionally captive shell that WELPATH directs care from out of the state. That means the county contract is being covertly administered by a non-licensed out-of-state corporation. Supervisors, this is, this is bigger than a contract enforcement issue. It's a clear violation of law, a threat to medical independence, a dangerous precedent in public health governance. The law stays, law says corporations cannot direct medical care. WELPATH is doing it daily, and they are doing it right here in Fresno. I urge... I urge this board to initiate a formal investigation by the sheriff's office or county council, both of whom are present here. Require independent legal review of the contract compliance with California Corporate Practice of Medicine law. Freeze all Wellpath-directed personnel decisions until lawful clinical autonomy is restored. Thank you for defending both the rule of law and the lives of those in our custody. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. I'll move to, do we have any public comment on closed session? Hearing none, county council?
Mr. Chairman, we do not anticipate any announcements out of closed session today, so if the board chooses, it may adjourn following closed session.
Okay. We don't need a motion.
Yeah, I'll move to adjourn following closed session.
Okay. Second. All in favor, so can I say an aye?
Aye.
Okay. None opposed? With that, we'll go to closed session after a short break. Boy, this is quick.